Could everyone rise for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Meeting minutes from October 8th. Has everyone had a chance to review?
Yeah.
Thank you. We have a motion. Second up. We got a motion, we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, meeting minutes from the ordinance meeting on October 22nd. Has everyone had a chance to review?
Yes. That motion definitely stands, please.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Moving on... To receipts. Does anyone have a chance to review receipts?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve receipts? You got that motion? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Claims. Everyone choose to review all claims. Do we have a motion to accept claims as president?
I'll get that motion.
Motion, you got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Financials. Anyone have a chance to review financials?
Yes.
Um, do we have a motion to approve financials?
Also, do we have a motion, yes, I have.
Yes, I have. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, building commissions.
Six weeks' notice this last week over six hundred bucks. High cash flow structure for the last year. Um, we're looking to sign up to be a chef as an experience on the property. I have received correspondence from Mr. Chavez to email. And I'm starting to understand his performance. I'm not really into the project. Um, issued a C O for PSX East Old Street. The house is done. It's all good.
Anything from Matt on the building commission?
No, no.
Good night. But moving on, fire.
Uh, four fire calls, one eight medical rooms, one business unit, two trainings, and one two hours. Uh, we closed our yearly, um, points in one fire on the first of the year. We had a total of sixty-five calls last year and two hundred ninety-three medical rooms. We had elections last week. We wanted to change the district of the city, the county manager. And David Gill will be our medical tenant. So if we got what's required by it. Uh, new rush traffic, a lot of expected. However, I think we're really pushing in the right direction because it's been hopefully about a year. But it's all there.
Anything from Matt on fire?
Thank you, Matt.
Moving on, town manager.
The mulch has been delivered for the parks. It's actually all spread and done now except for a little pile that we tend to save for some P D service workers. Um, we talked about the boom over the ditch banks. They finally got that there's all cleared. However, we can't, there's not available to rent until June or if we spoke out that far. So I'm gonna hold off and just do it April, maybe kind of get it moved down right when the spring starts to grow. You have something to do?
I was wondering if the town would, once you use theirs, if you need to get it done before.
I can ask, but I don't think so. You'd ask for things in passing.
I know they have close shoes rollers and things of that nature in the past, but I don't know about them in the long.
Yeah, they're pretty, they're the ones that spend some money on that now.
I can ask, it never hurts, right?
Um, the door of the pavilion at that park has been replaced. So, and it's been winterized, that bathroom gas part. So they're closed for the season. Hopefully, we start spraying off with. Um, community crossing grant's been submitted by Penn. I have listed all the roads. Um, that's what we talked about. So we'll see how it turns out. Uh, he said by the end of the year, we'll know if we've been selected and where we are. So should be good there. Finally, the, uh, clarifier project, the sewer plant's been finished by West Tech. It's operational. We're gonna put it back in service hopefully tomorrow. And I forgot to give you guys a copy of this quote. I'll send you one. Um, there's some street signs and some posts that need replacing towns. The bulk of it's gonna be our post. The only thing by is that thirty-seven on there, I believe. There's a look, that's a small thing, wanting to be a buy-up post. I guess never hurts to have some extra posts in storage, but that is what it is. Total price was five thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars seventy-one cents. So, some new street signs, I think, uh, yield signs. I'm gonna get with Jake, we get a couple truck signs, two trucks.
Okay. Sounds good. Moving on. Yeah, we need a motion to approve, uh, the quote from Mike with Todd Industry Supply for five thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-one cents. Do you guys have a motion? You got a motion? You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, last April brush pickup, we're gonna schedule November twenty-first. So we got two weeks out. I'll figure this through, any time's out, people get out. Take anything out before winter. And then the water study information passed out, extremely doing one end here, but it kind of breaks down the schedule. Everything should be completed, reports and stuff like that. So.
You do.
And that's all I have.
So a couple of questions, Ricky. Um, what about the parking lot on Bram Street next to?
On Third Street?
Yeah.
Um, we need to get somebody in there to excavate that out, popper slope and everything. Uh, maybe it won't happen until they're here next year anyway. So I'm reporting to J R. the owner, if you have a quote from him.
Okay.
Um, Rob Green, that we did turn up on both on that. So I'm moving on from that and we'll talk to somebody else.
Does that owner remain the same?
The what?
Did the owner remain the same or they were selling it?
An apple? Somebody bought it. I don't know who owns it now. Here and down.
Do we need to talk to them?
I can't.
We haven't even had the prior owner. We should probably talk to the new one.
Yeah. I'm sure they would be okay with it.
I would assume so as well, but. We really don't want those them coming in here and pitch for us wondering why we're making improvements on their property debt.
But on the order of J R., you have a quote, get that excavated, we'll have to talk to them, make sure it's okay.
So that's gonna be a string time project.
Absolutely, yes. They can go close down for the year.
Okay. And then, um, what about, do we need to do anything about, you know, if the leaves and fall and whatnot? Do we need to, um, communicate what our, what our stance is on that protocol? The people burning leaves on the streets and all that kind of stuff?
I always had wardens on that.
We have a lot of those, which I just can't, around the streets. Alright, yeah, but I mean, I think we should let people know that.
Okay.
Kind of, that's, uh, don't do that.
Okay. Yeah, that and then, uh, we'll get the streets we grow out of there next week or so, and start getting some of these leaves off the third street, so.
Yeah, so you could get the whole, you get a whole day.
Yeah, I guess. Somebody in the works, that'll work.
Good. On that, all you have?
You think we, you do?
Alright.
I'm getting that.
Anything for you? Moving on, questions?
Uh, hundred and four calls from last month. Busy month. Um, the Tahoe is in the ready to be picked up. So I just need to do it before we can get it, get it back here and it will probably be done before last press trucks. Um, I do have, uh, I need to send an email out to the board that refers to the restitution on the door at, um, that park, that park, excuse me. Um, once I get the bill from Ricky. But I'll send you an email to discuss that.
Okay.
How do you want to deal with it?
Okay. Um. So, you think?
Yeah.
Moving on, new each. So Jim is not here? Maybe it's.
Yeah. So his minute's over. Said he wasn't gonna be here.
Okay.
Uh, he, he had a question there. I think he was wondering if, uh, his proposal made its way through our legal council. I don't have to answer that because she's not present. So.
You, was he gonna check on that with her?
Uh, he said he hopes to see us next year. So I'm sure we'll know next month.
Okay.
So we approved that, didn't we?
Right.
Back.
Alright, moving on, part one.
Um, we had our Halloween carnival. It was well-attended. People liked the liberative arts theme as well. Um, we did the Halloween house separating contest again. We probably only had seven people enter this year, which was way down. So I don't know if we're not interested in doing that anymore. Like as a town, like what people's lives are on. So we'll see how it goes at Christmas. We'll be Christmas again and see how that goes. Um, the cast park grant, I've been in contact with Indiana D N R. And the person who's in charge of the grants is ill. Of course, he took over her spot, went on parent leave. And so up to my third person. So she says she'll be in touch with us soon about that, once she gets up to speed. And we haven't heard about the other grant, but that's just it.
Thank you. Go ahead and ask me. It was bummed out to see that we're delayed, but we're well.
I feel like we're probably waiting enough now that they can take some of their time. If they have to, they're just gonna be in the process for it. So hopefully they get their dates right, you know, and we're not penalized for, you know, because we have a finite amount of time to complete said grant. But it's not our fault that we haven't gotten started.
Yes. Okay, anything else for Casey?
No.
Thanks for receiving. Task force. Um, on the task force, we, uh, are going to change the meeting schedule every other month, or every month, starting in January. Um, one of the projects we'll be working on is that we've been very successful with, um, Indiana Housing Community Development Authority. And we'll be available to do the grant there. So we need to determine. We've got about three things we could use that month's work and that would require a grant. So we're gonna be working on that. And then, um, the other thing we're looking at is if we have studied, um, the dirt bill on downtown façades. I mean, I think we're on, if anyone, what we're gonna present to the town in terms of, of, uh, the downtown facade.
Thank you, Matt. Really good for Matt and Task Force. Moving on, internally, she's out today. So if we have anything to her, we can forward that on to her.
Work. Yeah, the, the main thing that she's aware of is that we talked about the stipends and also.
Yes.
It's the early message.
She's supposed to get back to us on that, right?
I think that date, twenty twenty-sixth half six, end of the fourth.
Do, I think someone left to make the motion to approve the holiday schedule for twenty twenty-six. I'll make a motion.
Motion, second. You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
The fact that we, twenty twenty-six. Stop working for the.
Do you have a motion to approve the salary ordinance for twenty twenty-six? I mean, approve that, your motion?
You got a second?
Yeah. All in favor? Uh, aye. Moving on. Carter's, uh, one twelve West Allen Street.
Yeah. Uh, we just made a spot to be able to talk in case you guys had any questions for us on the progress there. In case we ran anything. We haven't had any issues. So everything's been going pretty smoothly for us.
Nope. I was nearby the other day. It looks good. You guys are doing so people, good work. I mean, super quick.
Yeah, you guys are moving right along. So we appreciate that. Yeah, we're a little ahead of schedule right now.
Good. Don't worry, something will happen.
I'm sure.
Right. Do you guys need anything from us or you guys?
No.
No?
We just wanna make sure everything, you know, we're.
Hey, we appreciate that. So yeah, if you guys need anything from us, just let us know.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. Moving on. Mike Rowe, Veterans Committee.
I'm gonna be like, no, for this.
That'll be okay.
Okay?
Don't move today.
Close in this heat building. And I'm affiliated with, uh, folks twenty-three, maybe. It seems like, I don't know, the history lessons, right? Um, it was about a year and a half, maybe two years due. These, uh, veterans, um, acknowledgements, uh, started surfacing and conversation. And the Kemp and Jam were on the streets and made some easy section. Um, I just feel like, uh, uh, from, you know, the standpoint that we need some back of, uh, honors, uh, honor to the veterans in this area. They've got a wonderful history in the gym with all the people that served the world, the two hundred and sixty-five monuments. And you walk in there and see that. Um, now I'd like to maybe update it to a more modern type of, uh, monument. I mean, uh, I'll use that loosely because last, you don't want to look like cement today. This part is a proposal as, uh, what it looks like in the veterans, uh, book. So we'll let these two guys kind of come together and have some, also some more specific. And let you know what that mine, um, projects you can see are used. Uh, they're looking for a space to develop.
Yeah, so we're looking for approval for the location and placement of the, uh, uh, monuments. And we kind of call on it, uh, veterans crossing at Cast Park. So I need to be, somebody. And so basically the design that the veterans committee came up with was to represent, uh, the six standard lenses public service. But additionally, the Indiana National Garden, which are the rings. So we made sure that every branch was covered. Um, so you have these eight, they usually slummed on the outside. We wanted to make sure that the design is consistent with the existing parts. We're using the same deck fixtures. And this is a depiction of the actual path we're going down the park. You can see, um, and then the center stone, all of these that had descriptions on there. And I'll have a, uh, to relay a little bit about the description of that. Hopefully we can hear a overview of what we're looking for, for the end cast park. So we wanted to make sure it wasn't a area that was put out in a form somewhere that no one would know and visit. And we understand that paths and trails are a very important part of preparation and everything. And so that's why we wanted to make it part of the path. So people would enjoy, would walk through it. Um, those that would have family that served or veterans themselves or anybody that can walk through sick and would try to give the rest of it. Instead of placing it out in the corner somewhere. I'll let Jake speak about the exact place to. Um, and I said, we're just asking for approval for the location.
So we gave the area all to work. It's not a scale. Um, pendulum's working out there. I talked to Mike of Montail about this. We had a couple of ideas, we were thinking, kind of like that was the best ways. Uh, excuse me, the heartboard to the role there to make sure we're working on it in the future. We kind of planted on this space, uh, here. As far as the descriptions go, you see the office is the main center stone. Each stone has a light embedded into it or in front of it. As you see, they're in a crown. They almost go out four on each corner. Um, as you see, the American flag is on the entrances approach ways from the parking lot side and the pond side. One of the two sides will have the Indiana State Farm and the three guys with commission. And what we're kind of got, we would like to do kind of cabins, uh, we would lay it on there as well. So the kind of cabins triangle will be on one of the two sides. So all the ops can be in the state farm. We have several descriptions too, that I don't want to throw on these. Uh, basics ones here. We're still on the very final part, pulling the bronze on here up in the middle. We're just waiting to see if they make a little bit of a design there. Very simple, simplistic. Um, just trying to keep it as minimal for the town to as far as making this cross. Kind of go out there and mess with it, just stone or whatever that goes may be. Just keeping it very granite to the last part of the line, kind of be flattened there. And they all are the same. It's very, we'll be later, I just do it here. I guess that's what we're looking to kind of do, to mention it. If you add your blessings to, that's the spot we've been there, the reason that we're studying. Our stone layout time is fifteen. Fifteen to eighteen weeks if it's built out to the best, uh, this is the best thing that we want. So we're gonna have to place over sometime in December, so we can make sure we're ready. Um, we're trying to go for, um, oil day or not oil day, so a couple of weeks in June. Get from oil day, walk people out in the area. You know, be like that longer thing, so I'd be doing it daily. If we're, I'll be between the June and July. I know people do that in the towns as well. You know, in the future, people scowl and they can die. Get through the challenges, and we're gonna be at one year. We're looking at completion June of twenty-six.
So the main thing here is, um, make sure you get with Casey to make sure we don't have any conflict with, uh, Casey.
Yes, I agree with that right now. Casey, do you see it?
Yeah, it's going in between the walkway and the pond, right? We're not messing over there at all.
Yeah, we've had a few. He said it's, he's deal with that as well.
Yeah. And we make sure it can completely come back to form.
And we kind of thought too, as we strip this out, you have existing electrical for these, you know, the LED lights sitting out here. So we have an hour, kind of already set out here for electrical that can change here.
Continue.
Because just we don't disturb the existing pattern. It's already on the center side, definitely.
I'm good with where it's located. What do you guys think?
I'm good.
Okay. We'll know, we'll make a motion to approve the location of veterans crossing at Cast Park.
Yep.
You got a motion?
I only get.
Got a second? All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't know just if the right place you're at. But, um, maybe that goes under the draw. You got my going, you just, right? I wanted to mention to Mike that, um, with, um, Joe get a hold of you, because it's almost. He did. Sort of squared away on that.
That's for the.
This is for the sign that, uh, coming into town. It'll come from the, it's the north facing on the, on the, uh, on the east side.
The big building.
Yep. And this will be different. You'll notice the blue pattern here is different than the town signs that are either white with the, or yellow. So we, yeah, they're all, they're all pulling out of the, uh, load.
Perfect. I'm good. Do you have something, Mark?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention Jake and Mike, I mean, do you guys, that, I don't know where you're putting that, but you know about those two broderie benches? They got put in.
I believe one of the entries is right next to one of that bench.
Okay, so they're not in the way.
No, you're on the other side.
They're on the other side.
Oh, they're on the other side.
The pond and the walking paths.
On the south side.
Yeah, uh, no.
On the north side. There. The north side's where those two broderie benches. Two.
For the one.
But they're putting theirs on the south side.
The one at the pond.
I, I just, I don't see the picture. Right. Just I wanna make sure we imagine the town crew.
No, it's good. So the other big pass on, I thank you for that.
Yeah, yes. That's awesome.
I, you know, those are so many. Alright, thanks.
Good. Privilege of the floor. Mara.
I just wanted to say once again that all of you guys do a fabulous job. This is a wonderful community and I know a lot of you, um, go above and beyond, um, you know, pay scale. Everybody does and some don't even get paid. But thank you very much on behalf of all the people and everything to tell you thank you.
Anything, Mara?
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Alright, moving on. Full business. We have the stipends. We wait for back on those, correct?
Yes, yeah, that was, we have located that based on kind of third direction.
The stipends for, you know?
Uh. Yeah, we're waiting on back.
She's waiting on.
Department of Council, state.
Yeah.
To run. Alright, and then, um, you know, and we've got the water study here.
Yep.
With Ken Davis and then, uh, where are we here? Did we get anything communicated on the bridges?
Not yet. I haven't seen any.
All over them.
Alright. You're gonna be pretty quick on that. Got two weeks, three weeks?
Something like that.
Yeah. Anything else to cover our old business? Moving on, new business. Gee. What is mine?
Um, that give Judy some help. I would like to see, um, us, then it gives you a twenty-five dollar thing. But so I guess my, my first thing there is, it doesn't seem like the current salary supports that pay range with what, Judy? Up to twenty. So that's the first thing. And what is it, what is the need, Judy? How much time do you need someone helping? What kind of things?
That's, yeah, okay. So I'm, I'm not sure if I'm gonna come in.
Okay.
Um.
How I can ask you to?
Yeah.
So.
I think we do, are you looking at, uh, the, or at the hotel desk?
I think that's a good one.
We have this thing, I mean, aren't all of them?
I mean, off the top of my head, the first thing I wanna say is what, what needs are, right? I think that.
Actually, I've been working six day, eight hours. So, and yes, I'm still getting used to it.
Of course.
It's a problem.
Right.
And, uh, but I'm wondering if I need.
Right. Has Morgan been able to pick up anything or any of those?
We can't, I can't. The one thing that I need because of these, the names, the least, obviously, by, that's why I, you know, started, it's, it's out. So I'm gonna need to help them.
I think we'll just have to go person by person and see what it is. I think our next meeting is, I think Matt gave them some pretty sturdy deadlines and because I think in January, our ordinance meeting, we just need to go over that and discuss who needs a lien if he doesn't, correct?
Yeah, we should. He's actually paying it right now. He's, 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 couple of thirty dollars.
Okay.
Thirty dollars at least.
Good.
How much funding do you have for, for any part-time work?
In the water service.
So there's not a certain amount that we just come out of water service. So the, the deals are part-time, correct?
Yes.
And part of it, Judy, and we, we depend on, we could structure as consulting if you're making it work. Well, I mean, based on counsel. Right, and first off, one, we don't have our council here. Two, this is a, an elected official from Florida, not ours, right? So we have to approve salary portion, um, I mean, the actual need, but, but the need is on you, right? So.
So.
It would be nice to know, like, hey, I think I need somebody for X amount of hours a week or no more than so many hours.
And that's, yeah, I'm reporting, I think, to, you know. It's not gonna be working for him.
Alright, and.
I mean, I want to see her only get ten hours.
Right. And then the other question I would have for a legal council and I'm one for optics and this is your pool, not ours. But do we have to advertise? Do we not have to advertise? You know, if she has experience in the work that she's done?
That's, that's a big question.
And I don't think there's anything at all.
But I think, actually. Right.
So what do you need from us today at this meeting?
Yes, but, yeah.
I mean, it's your employee, right? And you have a, and you already have an existence salary ordinance.
What?
So in theory, you don't need a blessing.
Well, with the set of eight ordinance, you know. Well, this is a ton of eight ordinance, gonna have to be a permit.
If you're trying to pay them, you are.
Yes.
So then my question to you would be, it sounds like looking at the salary orders to, a full-time employee for the street department is out of the grades, lowest ones around twenty. So you wanna bring someone in part-time in your office for more than that?
I only believe not, still, I don't think, hopefully, we can have, but. I'm playing, I guess, I don't, I definitely did. She was gone before one fifty.
Oh, I'm sure she is.
But, um, I'm not sure how fair that is to work on any kind of insight.
Right. I mean, I support, I support your needs and whatever those are, I wanna make sure that we do everything we have to do right there.
That's why I said, let's, I, let's get through the holidays, and we can sleep.
So in the meantime, should we be talking with, do you wanna raise the, I mean, the first thing that would have to be done, if this was the case, we need to get with this salary ordinance.
Yeah, so I would have to deal with salary, according to the government, to the, to.
Well, it sounds like that needs to be put in place first, before we, and then we need to talk to Becky. Talk to Becky on what's the right way, so wanna get, do you wanna get with, who wants to get with Becky on that? I would assume she would be, you wanna get your busy employee? Okay.
So, so we don't really need a motion, just, well, we want us, is the, the pathway to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like it's something that's already in your budget.
Yeah, i- if you need her, yeah, yeah, whatever you need.
And by the way, I've had discussions with her, and she's very flexible. It's like, hey, whatever you need, let me know, uh, at this point.
Yeah, and it doesn't sound like, since she's her own office, the only thing that she really needs from us is a salary ordinance, people, right?
Yes.
And you're not fitting a, a full-time position.
Yep.
Your pleasure for your needs.
Yes, correct, because she could take all from ours.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Do we need a motion now?
No, yeah, no, all right. Okay. Any new business, anything else?
And, we.
We good on new business? Do you have a motion for adjournment? Only the motion? All in favor? Uh, thank you.
I got things.
I can use a rusher, though.
Okay, same.
I'm like, we're supposed to be here, okay. I want to, do you stay, do you want to, okay. So, we have some, first, no, okay. So, I don't know where, okay, so, no, 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 and if I, we talk about the company, and then I, they got, that guy, I'm firm, I'm, I just.
This meeting, this meeting.
I might thought I'd need to know if someone, I don't know, yeah.
Question, you guys, on Hartman? He has designed, he didn't even have a. Do they have storage in this room, for the one?
Yeah.
Okay. So all of it's just storage?
No, it's all, Christmas decorations in there, and a, pretty, it's, it's, it's.